I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wogle.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brackman.
Here. I would like to invite Rob Kane with the American Legion Post 347 to lead us in this evening's political regent. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Kunkel to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District? To provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for joining us. We will start with communications concerns and constructive ideas for the district. If anyone would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, that would be your opportunity to do so. Alright, so we'll go around the board table and I will start tonight with you, Mr. Struse.
Thank you. Everybody just knowing that this month is the school board recognition month and the Iowa Association of School Board encourages communities to celebrate and thank their local school board members during school board recognition month. March this month with May first through the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This year's theme, "A Guiding Light for Student Success", honors the unwavering dedication of school board members who illuminate the path to learning and opportunity for every Iowa student. "School Board Members Serve as Beacons of Leadership, Ensuring Their Districts Stay on Course Towards Student Success," said IASB Board President Jesse Howard. "Their work overseeing budgets, developing policies, and fostering a strong educational culture creates a bright future for our students. We encourage all Iowans to take a moment this month of May to thank their local board members for their service, which we are doing this evening." More than two thousand Iowa board members, one thousand eight hundred forty-five in K through twelve, seventy-nine in our AAAs, and one hundred twenty-four community college board members volunteer their time each month to guide their districts. While they receive no compensation, the reward comes from seeing Iowa students thrive. PK-12 school board members oversee seven billion in general fund dollars statewide for Iowa Public Schools, supporting four hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety-nine students. AEA board members manage four hundred thirty-four million to provide special education, media, and educational services to schools across the state. This evening, Cody Elementary PTA, represented by President Brianna Peterson and teacher, also Allison Samuelson, are here to represent the PTAs across all of our districts to say thank you to all of you for what you do for us every single year. And they brought a small gift for you as well this evening. But again, thank you to the two of you. Is there anything you'd either like to say?
A small thing?
Excellent. Please come forward.
Good evening. As the superintendent said, my name is Bree Peterson. I'm the PTA president at Cody Elementary. Along with me is Allison Samuelson, our vice president, along with our beloved fourth grade teachers. On behalf of Cody Elementary students, staff, families, and PTA, we just want to pop by to thank you, LaTay, for helping all of us bloom. To show our appreciation, here's a little something for you. Colonel Cody popcorn, Cody Road coffee, and Cody rose flowers. All local, all Cody, and all in your honor. We sincerely thank you for your commitment, dedication, and effort in shaping the future of our students' education. A job, as we all know, is so imperative for their future lives as adults. We are incredibly proud to call Cody Elementary "our school" and even more so, Pleasant Valley "our district". With much gratitude, we thank you. And we have a card from our entire school with our students' signatures thanking you all so much.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, that's really cool.
Thank you so much.
That was such a creative and thoughtful gift. Wow.
Thank you to all of you, what you do. We really appreciate it and make a difference in our district, for sure. Thank you.
Very, very kind. Alright, well, I need to move on from that, but I'll start with board members. Mrs. Wheeler, did you have anything this evening?
I would just like to congratulate all of our graduating seniors. I know graduation was this weekend and wish you all tons of luck in the future. And I've said that I'm not there to see what the Cody PTA has given the board, but I really appreciate the kind words and thank you.
Alright, thank you. I'll make sure you get yours.
Because she wants to stop by tomorrow.
Okay, if you want to stop by tomorrow, that'd be great.
I will be there.
Alright. Mr. Ayers, did you have anything?
Other than thank you very much from the PTA, truly appreciate it. And also congratulations to all graduates of two thousand twenty-five.
What about your Kunkel?
Yes, to both of those, we're really lucky at Cody to have teachers that join the PTA and help make it a really collaborative experience to have a wonderful PTA president. She does so much for us. And Mrs. Brashy, it's a great school. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us tonight, but mostly what you do for our students at Cody. And I also want to say good luck to our PB boys soccer at their first sub-state game, which is starting very soon. It's going to be an exciting game. They're playing Davenport North, who they recently tied. So, if you're looking to get outside at around seven o'clock, I don't know when exactly, but
What's at seven?
Go watch the game. It's fun. And then last but not least, I know we've talked about Biz Town a lot because it's been going on recently, but I was able to go volunteer at the actual Biz Town. It's new this year. It's a new location in Moline, and it was fantastic. The kids had the best time. The teachers were amazing and just seeing their energy for the whole Biz Town event. I mean, they were literally dancing to the music the whole time it was going on. And I was just amazed. I'm like, how do you have this much energy in May? I don't, and I'm not working with kids all day long. It was great. And I actually think there's a group of Cody students that are going to do the Biz Town camp this summer because they thought it was so amazing. And so I just really appreciate that collaboration. I appreciate everything JA does for our district. Thank you.
Canwisher.
So also, I'd like to congratulate the class of twenty, graduating class of two thousand twenty-five, but also congratulations to Kristen Foley, Wendy Reyes, and Dr. Lynn Lundberg, aka Dr. L, on their recent retirement and thanks to those three for helping Molly and I distribute the folios on Sunday. That was a necessary element of it. And then lastly, heartfelt thanks to the educators, the staff, the administration, who, you know, really lead the whole process. It's, I've only been involved in it twice now. It's always smooth from that perspective. We made a few strides, I think, this year to sort of formalize how us board members can engage in that process. So anyway, thanks very much for that.
Director Wogle.
Again, I guess, I thank the Cody PTA as well for all of your recognition for the work. We appreciate it. And then, although I didn't give out the folios, I was at graduation, it's, I think, my tenth straight year of graduation. And it's really great when there are no hangups, and there wasn't this year. No bus accidents or any of those things. It was a great evening, and it was our largest class that Pleasant Valley had graduating was this last year. And even with that large class, everything went off without a hitch. So I want to thank everybody who was involved. I wanted to thank the Vibrant Center as well for hosting it and doing a good job as they have over the last nine years.
I'll move on to Mrs.
I just, I want to just give a shout out to Mrs. Brashy because she is here. And the PTA ladies that were there too. I got to attend kindergarten roundup at Cody Elementary with my youngest one. And it just, it just was a fabulous experience. I really tried to put my parent hat on and just enjoy it as a parent. And I was very nervous because my little one was telling me it's illegal to not have a seatbelt on. So there's no seatbelts in the bus. So he was crying about going and they paired him with a wonderful sixth grade student who did not know who I was and came back in and very politely came to shake my hand and said, "You've got a great kid there, miss." So I just, I had to tell Mrs. Brashy about her students and I need to send the picture I took of them both to the teacher. And it was just lovely. You did a fabulous job. So.
Thank you. Awesome. Anything?
No.
Alright, and Mr. Smith.
I have nothing.
Alright, Mrs. Damon. Thank you. And Mrs. Rutzkern.
I have three quick items. I want to congratulate our PVHS choirs for their performance at the IHSMA Large Group Festival. Six choirs performed at Large Group and earned the following ratings. Chamber Choir with Division One Superior. They received perfect scores from two judges and was just one point away from a perfect from the third. Chamber Treble, they received a Division One Superior, perfect score from one judge. The Bass Choir received a Division One Superior rating. Treble Choir, Division One Superior. Concert Choir, Division Two Excellent. And Concert Treble and Pleasant Valley Singers received a Division Two Excellent rating. So congratulations to them. Also, last week, we received an email from our business department about how we had a record number of personal finance students sit for the optional U and I exam. And we are excited to report that ninety-eight percent of those students passed the exam. So, a lot of students received a gift card which credited them back, the registration fee of a hundred dollars. If you pass, you get that back. And also on top of that, if a student passes, they receive college credit from U and I for the finance course there. So pretty big deal, pretty big accomplishment for those students and you for helping them out. And last but not least, last time we were together, Mr. Stutenberg from the high school presented on our automotive program. And I'm super excited to announce that today we found out that we were awarded a twenty-eight thousand dollar grant from the Arconic Foundation to help modernize that lab. So that was the best news of the day in my world. So we're super excited about that.
Alright, thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Hyatt, do you have?
Yeah, I've got a few things. As, as everybody can tell in the room, we're on the cusp of new season and in the beginning of many new sport seasons and things like that that come with spring. And wanted to congratulate the theater department for another great performance, Curious Savage, at the high school. So that was fantastic. Also want to echo the sentiments with regard to Biz Town and the hard work and prep that's been done by the whole community, even the broader Quad Cities and the partnerships with the businesses to make that really cutting edge and that exciting experience for, for our students. And kudos to our teachers and administration for coordinating all the way through that experience through the student size because really the interview skills they pick up. For those of us that have had the good fortune to participate in that step in the process, it is delightful. It's incredible how skilled our kids are, and that's because of great teaching. And so we're grateful for that. Also, our reading corps. We just got an announcement today. The goal of our reading corps, our AmeriCorps Literacy Tutors, is to essentially get our students who are on the bubble, almost there, but not quite yet proficient, to proficiency in, in a way where they can spread their wings and fly for good. And we got data today that yet again shows that. We've been put upon a list of districts in the United States, just kind of a perfect example, if you will, of that program as far as that commitment to those kids. That takes a lot of work from our people. Our reading specialists are especially instrumental as the internal coaches and, and our administration working through that hiring process. It has been especially challenging in recent years, just with the job market, the way it is, to get these volunteers to put forth that kind of time commitment and energy for very little in return compensation wise. And so we're grateful for that, and it's worth it for our kids. And so I know there's a lot of things happening on a national level with that. I would advocate for that program sticking around forever because of what it's done for our children. And last, I want to echo Jen, or Jill's sentiments with regard to kindergarten roundup. That's one of the really awesome parts of this season. Seeing why we're here and that, that senior walk-off, experiencing that, giving the visualization, visualization opportunities to our young ones so that they can see what they have forward to look, what they have, I can't spit it out tonight, to look forward to in the way of representing the Spartan Nation well. So lots, lots to celebrate.
Alright, along with that, we have the Flag Essay winners with us this evening as well, and that is
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you, we keep Buffalo Bill Post 347 mighty busy here in the Quad Cities and in Pleasant Valley this season as well. And so very grateful for the leadership that these gentlemen provide in our district with regard to patriotism and commitment, far beyond what the Flag means to me, essay. But that's such a key part of our community and who we are for kids and for our fifth graders. And so it's a lot of fun to celebrate the culmination of that piece of it. But there, they were at graduation, they were, they're in parades all throughout the community. And we're really grateful to Buffalo Bill Post 347 for your representation and your service before and during now with the Buffalo Bill Post. So thank you for being here. We have Rob Kane and Carl Kryle here tonight. Carl's my Navy partner. We like to talk Navy talk and maybe, maybe throw a little jab at our other friends from other armed forces along the way right now. So, thank you for being here, and I'm going to let you do the introductions and honors. Thank you, parents, teachers, administrators, who are here this evening to celebrate the learning that our students have done and the awesome compositions they have put together about what the Flag means to them along the journey. So Rob, if you'd like to do the intros, that'd be great.
Alright, so like I said, my name is Rob Kane. And on a side note, before I get into the fifth grade essay, as the president of the Chamber of Leclerc, I'd like to thank the Cody PTA for supporting local and buying local. We appreciate, I follow that to you, oh god. But again, my name is Rob Kane. I've done this, I believe this is my third year that I've been honored to be able to kind of do the presentations and the awards. And I got to tell you from standpoint that attending these events, if you haven't been there, they're outstanding. I recommend that you attend as many of the different schools as you can because they're all a little different, but they're all outstanding and very, very patriotic. So again, my name is Rob Kane. I was in the Iowa Air National Guard for six years, munitions specialist, which just means I get to load and unload bombs off the aircraft to maintain the munitions for the machine gun. Carl, if you want to introduce yourself real quick.
I think everyone knows me. I've been around for a long time, twenty-nine years with the post. I spent twenty-three years in the United States Navy, retired as a senior chief petty officer. And the Navy had become my life, and whenever I retired, I wasn't sure that I wanted to actually get involved in anything else. But when I moved back here to Iowa with my wife, my father-in-law was a member of 347. He insisted that I go to a meeting with him one evening, even though I resisted. He dragged me there anyways, with the promise of some chicken wings and some fries and a few beers after the meeting at our luncheon. I said, "Okay, okay." So, as soon as I walked in the door, I was immediately grabbed by two big individuals, two Brockhaus brothers. You all probably remember that name.
Yeah.
And next thing you know, within six months, I was the chaplain of the post. Somehow, you get selected for things if you're a new guy. And since then, I've been post commander, three years, vice commander, everything else in the Legion, and I still hold a bunch of offices there, twenty-nine years later. So I'm still serving the community, the state, and the nation. And I got to tell you, I echo, echo everyone's sentiments here about Pleasant Valley School District is the best. Me, in the state of Iowa, and perhaps even in the nation. I've been, I had my son in a lot of schools while we were in the Navy, transferring around all over the place. And I see the job that everybody here does with the kids, from elementary to senior. What especially warms my heart is when we do the flag raising ceremonies on Friday evenings for the home, or the home football games. And we have band members and football players that actually take the time to stop, shake our hand, and thank us for our service. So, you don't get that kind of treatment in a lot of communities. And it says a heck of a lot about Pleasant Valley. That's my piece.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Alright, and from the fifth grade essay program overall, you know, there's a few special kind of thank yous I want to put out. First off, Missy Huff, who isn't here tonight, does a tremendous job. It gets everything really organized and put together and really makes us go. But secondly, I guess, really another one that's mostly is the fifth grade teachers. And I'm going to mention them by name. If you're here, please feel free to stand up. But we've got Angela Sparks, Robin Waldron, Grace Nielsen, Abby Musser, Mariah Spreez, and Mike Stroh. Together, there was four hundred and sixty-four fifth grade students enrolled this year. Four hundred and forty-nine submitted essays. That's ninety-seven percent. But again, without the teachers' involvement and the school's support, you know, you wouldn't see that kind of accomplishment. And when we do the fifth grade essay contest, we do a little bit of education about how to respect the flag, like when the flags are coming by in a parade or if it's being raised. And all I can tell you is the parades that we've been in, the local parades, when you walk down, the respect that the youth show, you hear how disrespectful youths are these days. They do stand up and they know what to do. And it's, from a veteran's standpoint, very heartwarming when we see that. So, again, shout out to all of you. And then for the events themselves, my goodness, you principals that are getting involved and the teamwork, you know, the, the people that you have that put it together, they're quite the event. So how about a round of applause for all of the teachers? Actually, out of those four hundred and sixty-four, we only have five winners. So I do want to introduce, if you're here, please stand up and introduce any family or teacher that is with you. So our first one was Bridgeview, Owen Coffer. How about Elsie Howerton? Gavin Raff. If you want to introduce the folks that are with you.
I'd like to introduce my teacher, Grace Nielsen.
Thank you, Gavin.
Gavin, Gavin, do you want to come to the front, we'll have you guys line up in the front up here, okay? Excellent, thank you.
Gavin, could you also introduce your parents? Any other family?
My dad is Colby Raff, and my two brothers are Carter and Mason.
Thank you.
Want to introduce yours?
I'm Asha, um, my dad's you, Mr. Schmarr. I would like to introduce my teacher, Ms. Wizer, and my friends, Willis.
Yep, we're very thankful that you're here. And she was the overall district winner this year, here again. One more, one more done, and then Lydia Willett. And then, uh, Hayley Dunn.
I'd like to introduce my dad, Paul Johnson, and my mom, Angela Johnson, and then myself, Hayley Dunn.
Well, these guys all did a fabulous job at all the individual events, and they read their essays. I was able to record them and share them with their teachers and their parents, so hopefully they'll have that for future use. Unfortunately, yours didn't come out as good, so luckily you're redoing it again under the recorder and getting it back to you for today. So, if you wanted to come up.
What the flag means to me. The American flag represents many things. It's what made me feel welcomed into America when I was immigrating. When I came here, I felt like I had the independence, freedom and courage that I needed. When I first saw the Statue of Liberty, I felt like I had freedom here in America. The flag is in my heart and beating with freedom. Everywhere I look, I see little flags in front of houses, schools and more, and when I look there, I feel hope. Hope that I will become a great person when I grow up. Freedom is something I got in America. I was little when I immigrated here, so I didn't know much, but as I grew older, I realized how hard they worked to get me this life. To get independence and want me to get a great job. My parents had to move here with independence. The flag speaks to me, and it's that I should work hard and be a great person. I want to show my independence to everybody and work hard. I want to be more courageous and live my life to the fullest. My parents struggled so much to get here, and I want to be just like them. I'm so lucky that I get a great education and a great life here in America. Every time I see the flag, I feel bravery running through my body immediately, like I'm a superhero. The flag represents bravery to me, and I want to use it. As you can see, the flag means so much to me, it's what made me feel welcomed into America. My freedom, independence and courage made me like this. I love my life, and the flag makes it even better, thank you.
We presented this, the, uh, new flag for the district, and then if we could all come up and get a picture, she presents that flag, that would be outstanding. And who wants to accept the flag? Come on up here, Case. We'll get up where we got some flags behind us. Here, line up, face the audience. There are you, be on that side. Yeah, do I have someone that could get a picture? You guys ready, smile? Once again, I'd just like to thank everybody, all those involved with the great essay for allowing us to continue to do it. We enjoy it, like I said, if you haven't been out to some, please get out. You'll be amazed at how, how patriotic these events are. So, thank you very much, from the American Legion.
Thank you so much. We, we do really appreciate everything that the American Legion helps our school district out with. I know, like Tony said, we had you, we kept you very busy, so.
Well, we appreciate the involvement, so thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on with our meeting, so if anyone wants to leave, now would be a good time. Thank you, elementary principals and teachers for coming.
Kevin, all our friends.
No, you're fine, thank you.
Where'd everybody go?
All right. Moving on to, uh, Mr. Struse, did you have any other communications tonight?
I just, I, I echo again, just a real huge thank you to who makes graduation run so smoothly. It's just, it is a huge undertaking, and the organization that goes on behind the scenes is phenomenal. And I just, a lot of people just say it's a classy, rich, just a well-run graduation. It's just, it's heartwarming and very exciting because people do it, do a great job, so. Well done, thank you to everybody, and, you know, seeing them tonight, just remind, um, Carl, uh, Bob Brockhaus did make it to some of our sessions this year as well, I think he made it to one or two of them for sure. So it's just a great that he's out there and still participating, and just another great man.
Yes, I have heard several comments about our graduation ceremony, and, uh, many times I've heard it said that it was, it was a big ceremony. It is, it's, the music is amazing, messages are great, and, uh, it's not long and drawn out for as many students as we have. It does, it does move.
Thank you to all of you who participated, really appreciate it.
I think just keeping it at the vibrant center the way we have for the last nine years has really, uh, changed whole approach to graduation, where people do not have restrictions on how many people they can bring. And so to see the whole audience and see them celebrate each of the graduates, I think is important. And it's really nice to have that luxury, where before, when it was in the gym, limited amount of attendance. Not have that anymore, I think has really been beneficial for all the classes since.
We have a number of people sitting in the upper deck this year.
Yes.
It was amazing, too.
I thought it was going to be more people this year than.
Cause it was the largest class.
It was the biggest.
Yeah.
It would only get larger here the next few years, so.
All right, moving on to consent agenda, tonight we have minutes, enrollment, personnel and cooperative agreement. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If none, I'll take a motion.
I move to the board to accept the consent agreement presented.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Ayers to approve this evening's consent agenda that has presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to bills, um, I'll start with general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that the nutrition fund warrant be issued in a total amount of one oh three, hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents in payment of invoice presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wogle, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Kunkel, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Kunkel, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund.
I move the management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisher, that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move that the purple, uh, warrants be issued in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and forty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Kunkel, that physical plant and equipment lobby fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debt Service Fund.
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two million, one hundred and one, one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Ayers, that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Construction Fund.
I move that the student construction fund warrants be issued in a total amount of a hundred and twenty-six dollars and seven cents in payment of invoice presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Kunkel, that student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that the internal service fund warrants sixty-six forty-nine to sixty-six fifty, and ATH thirty-two eighty-five through thirty-two eighty-eight be issued in a total amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and eighteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Ayers, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, Trust Fund.
I move that the trust fund warrants be issued in a total amount of five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents in payment of invoice presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Kunkel, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, there is no old business this evening. The new business, we're studying with new business would be the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar review. Mr. Struse?
Thank you. So, back in December, we had brought forth, and we approved our calendar back on December sixteenth for the upcoming school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Since that time, when we had our, uh, weather makeup days this year that pushed us into that, you know, the first Monday of the month, and, or second Monday of June, what that was going to look like. We realized there were some hardships when you get into that time of the year, when it starts looking at the community and different camps and things beginning. So, at that point, we had talked about that this upcoming year, when we decided to go back and not end on Monday, and on Friday, we talked about the upcoming year was gonna have the same challenge, so what do we do? So today I want to bring forward again, just have a deeper conversation about next school year number one. That's the first goal for twenty-five, twenty-six. But then it kind of outlined some thinking between twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-nine, what those three years can look like. And just kind of give you a broad picture. Remember, school calendars are something that we usually start talking about with our PVA members right around the end of October first and November. So we'll definitely do that again for next year for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Um, and we can always make changes in what days we take off, but at least this gives us a camp, chance to go back and look at this next calendar. You can see on the screen, you also have a copy in front of you, we are set to start on Monday, August twenty-fifth, that's the soonest we can start by legislation. We do have our typical set makeup day that all of you are very familiar with in that date in February, so come February sixth, if we have a snow day before that, or a weather day before that, we would then know that we would do a early out schedule on the thirteenth, and then have conferences or conference prep time actually after that rest of the day. And right now, we are set for Monday, June eighth. So Monday, June eighth, obviously it pushes us into the second week of June, and on a Monday. Yeah, we ended on a Monday before, yes, many, many times. I think the issue just comes down to when you look at where we are and the issues, like I said, in the community. So, we go by a hundred and eighty days of school, that's what we've always worked off of. At the elementary level, that equates to one thousand, one hundred and twelve hours, so I put a plus thirty-two, because that's thirty-two hours above the mandated one thousand, eighty that we have to have. So kind of keeping that in mind, some suggestions that I'm bringing forward today would be, just like we are doing this year, go from that Monday and actually use Friday, June fifth, as our last day of school next year. So the question is, well, if you have a snow day, or a weather day, what is going to happen? Cause that could push you into the next week. So this year, what we did, because we had two days, we took the last early out on the third Wednesday of May, which is an hour and a half. We used June fifth instead of being an early release, well, actually for us this year, it's June sixth. Instead of that being an early release day at eleven-thirty for the elementary, we are going a full day, which gains us another three and a half, so that puts us over a half day of school, which counts as a day of school in our wise. So, this year, that's basically what you saw happen. A year from now, we could do that same thing, gives us two weather days, at least this gives us a chance to make something up. Should we have two days, hopefully nothing more than that, um, and our last day, that would be the June fifth, on that Friday. Now, different from this is, it's a hundred and seventy-nine days of school versus a hundred and eighty days of school in this format right now. That would be a change. Now, we are still twenty-six hours to the good of a thousand, eighty. So there are things we could look at next year creatively speaking, if we had three weather days, that we had to, you know, do something different there. If you look to the future, go to the next one, so twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'll note that on this one here, we are on the back end of the seven-year calendar right now. So the next couple of years, what you will see is, we will be ending on the front side of June versus the end of the first week of June, or the second week. So, again, we start on Monday, August twenty-fourth. We had the last day of June fourth, which is a Friday again, that year, just happens to be a Friday on June fourth. But you use our February makeup day. We like this idea of the last early out and the last day of school being a full day, if we like that, that gives us a second day. And in some years, which twenty-six, twenty-seven is one of those, Easter and Good Friday are in the month of March. When they're in the month of March, in our contract, we have that the last Friday in April is a day off by contract. If we wanted to, another option would be, do you make that an early out day? And we could make up another day of school if we had three in that year. So that's another option that we could always discuss in the future. At least it gives us an idea, say, hey, one day, two days, three days, we're still good. And on a Friday, a hundred and eighty days of school, all good. If you go to the next one there, you'll see twenty-seven, twenty-eight, again, twenty-third is when we start. You got the two days for makeup day, like we've been talking about the last two years. Notice we end here on Thursday, June first, versus a June seventh or a June eighth. Um, and again, it's a Thursday, so you gain a day there, so you have two. If you want to bump a day, you could do that, you could have three then that year, it'd still be done at the end of the week. And the last one, take it one step further, again, here you'll note that June fourth, it's a Monday. So the question there is, now we've kind of started this tradition of not ending on a Monday, do we do that? Now that's the la- that's the first Monday of June, so we could have some conversation about that in the future. But if we went with the same idea of not ending on a Monday, you'll know you had the three makeup days, and if you wanted to, you could go the one seventy-nine versus the one eighty. Those are all conversations for the future. But at least it gives you kind of a pattern of what four years could look like from a scheduling standpoint. One thing you will see right now, North Scott really mirrors our calendar. Um, one thing you will see right now, North Scott really mirrors our calendar pretty closely. But they have two less days. They go a hundred and seventy-eight days versus a hundred and eighty. Might ask why? Your parent-teacher conferences are after school. You can use those hours as a day. We have never done that. We've always kept it as, we've gone a hundred and eighty days of school. So, that's one reason why they're a little bit earlier than we are. Um, but again, so one-seventy-nine, I don't know, one-seventy-nine versus one-eighty, but at least for the next year, if you go back to the first one, then again, Heather, that'd be great. Again, for next year, this would get us out of that second week of June, which tends to be the biggest concern for most people.
I agree.
So, and again, if you look at the calendar in front of you, the large one that's printed out for you, again, when you look at the structure of the calendar, the fall break, twenty-four, twenty-seven, people really seem to like that fall break. It's a nice break. When you get to November, we've tried having Thanksgiving off, that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we've always landed there. We have done early outs before on that day, but again, it's just seemed better just to take the Tuesday and let that be the last day. In winter break, you could come back and say, we could go to school on December twenty-second and December twenty-third. That'd be an option. You could gain a day there. Um, February, we pick up the day there. Spring break, and then after that, it's just pretty much Good Friday and Memorial Day after spring breaks. There's, really, you only have a couple of days. Couple at winter break in this calendar for next year and the October. Um, so I guess I would like your feedback on this thinking, really, because we're just talking about next year's calendar. I just wanted to put the other ones out in front of us to have us, at least, what does the future look like, give you some perspective.
I think it makes the most sense, um, with the way that you have it now, having options available to make up if you have more to their days.
Here from our community and teachers, it seems like this is something that they want to and, um, especially from the teacher perspective, there's something that we can do to make them, um, feel appreciated or that they, you know, are getting, or that something that, you know, would make their job better, improve their feelings towards, I think.
Kathy, you may bring up a very good point. One thing different about this calendar versus what's happening this year. Remember, we just were ending on the sixth or on the, uh, si, uh, sixth, but we're bringing everybody back on the, we just dropped it. Uh, contract wise, they had to get enough days in. In this format here, we would just do it, maybe a hundred and seventy-nine days versus a hundred and eighty. So, when our teachers get done on that last day, we're done.
I'm not really excited about reducing the calendar below one-eighty, to be honest. More in a long-term sense than necessarily the next calendar year. I s, when I saw this, I started thinking about, maybe we should ask how much days, can we take two half-days out, basically? But then I also realized, um, when we start to stack on things like AI coming next year, which is all new to everyone, we really can't do that. So, I think for the next year, I'm probably okay with one-seventy-nine, but in the long term, I'm not excited about that approach.
I agree. I think that, I, I like the one-eighty. I do see the logistical issues with regards to going into that second week of June. And so, when you weigh both of those things, uh, I think we need to be cognizant of that, and therefore that's why I can justify ending on a Friday. But when you mentioned in twenty-twenty-nine, where now it's Monday, but it's that first week of June, I don't know if that would be as, um, amenable to that, because it's not going, because we're still, we're, we're just ending in that first week of June. And so, I agree with, uh, that I'd like to try and keep them one-eighty days, but if we go into the second week of June, then we can make some. And we are committed to excellence and every extra hour of, um, instruction is going to be an extra benefit to our students.
I've been asked directly, why don't we do the state minimum? I'm like, because we're not the state minimum school, we're the top school, that's why.
Thank you. Yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's a tough one.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, I, I guess, you know, the, this teacher and staff and what I think are very important, um, because there's so much material to cover and they have to feel comfortable that, you know, they have that time and that, so. Um, that's kind of, you know, I don't want to, maybe this is a can of worms you don't want to deal with right now, but since we're talking about the calendar. Um, I do get comments once in a while, especially from elementary teachers, that when we have a day off during a week and then we also have an early out, it's like the week is so crazy. So, an example would be, uh, uh, like that April first, we have an early out, and then April third, we have a no-school day. So, you kind of, you, you got an early out, then you got another full day, then you got, um, you know, a day off. Yeah, and then, um, I'm trying to think here, what, like, uh, there was another, oh.
Well, it, it, it starts in September. You have the situation in September.
Yeah.
It transpires again in, um, January, February, April.
Yeah, so, what I was trying to get at is that, um, you know, as we get towards the end of the school year and, you know, we're getting to where, you know, final assessments and, and, uh, wrapping up the year, I'm wondering if moving some of those early outs to the last day of school or keeping that May twentieth early out and eliminating two early outs earlier in the calendar would be beneficial. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. It just seems like it comes up during the year when we have these, you know, schedules where you've got an early out, then we got one more day of school, then we got a stay off and, you know, I, I think it, uh, you know, there might be, you know, when we have four-day weeks, does an early out make sense, I guess is what I'm saying. Would those early outs be more beneficial later in the school year?
Especially for those younger students where instability might be challenging for them and trying, you know, I think in those kindergartners and things like that.
Well, and I think that's where I've heard it the most is from elementary, um.
So, what's the impact?
Maybe you have more to add to that, Tony, but that, I feel like I've heard comments, uh, more from the elementary side on that.
I think just the, the nature of a self-contained classroom and the fact that the teachers are the facilitators of learning, they're the leaders of learning in, in the classroom and the need for structure, particularly for our littles. Um, that merits a look in the way of, it, it definitely interrupts the ebb and flow. I know, just reverting back to discussions that I've had as a principal, I am in this position um, with regard to, um, the special schedules, creating, um, equity there. It can, there are some minor things that we can always work through with flexibility and plan, planning ahead. Um, things like, uh, your sections in a four-section, three-section or two-section building, being thrown off a little bit if you're in a, say, the middle of an art unit. Just to pick one of the specials and kids might get a little ahead of a project or behind in a project because of that disequilibrium there. Those kinds of things can happen in the world of specials, um, in, in the world of, um, the early out and blocks of time specifically with the core instruction for literacy and for math block and then wind time, what I need, um, the extension of that, it can be challenging on some days. Those are there. But it, with, with careful planning ahead. Yeah, we get that well.
Be interesting to map out long-term, instead of maybe doing the first and third, or are you doing the second and fourth? You know, because a lot of it's trying to create consistency for parents as well. And again, depending upon when things land, you're always going to have those same weeks, um, at different times. Be interesting to just map a long-term view of that.
Yeah, I would worry about the loss and not just professional development, but that collaboration across buildings and grades, but.
I mean, we still have the same number of early outs. They just be.
But they need the collaboration consistently throughout the year. And if you move them at the end of the year, right, they're missing them early in the year. That's why. So, maybe moving even at least.
Yeah, I just think there's, as Tony mentioned, there's just ebbs and flows in the school calendar. I mean, October gets crazy, February gets crazy, then you hit April, you're just doing state assessments, AP se, assessment. I mean, there's just so many things that are just happening. Surveys are happening and it's just, there's just a lot of craziness.
And I would think that most parents, like, you could maybe, let's say in September, switch it to the tenth and twenty-fourth, which would then avoid the problem. But then you're not creating that consistency for parents, where one month it's first and third, and the next month it's second and fourth. And I don't think that they would like that, even though it would be more convenient. I just think that that unpredictability would be difficult for parents.
Community members too, and parents, daycare providers, IMCA programs.
Exactly.
Things like that. It, it takes planning ahead. I mean, you can, you can work through it.
Yeah.
So, I guess, you know what you're saying. I think it, it, again, it's just looking at one year right now and then in the future, look at what days may shift left, you know, left and right here, so.
You, the other option that I had actually, so we talked about it and weren't fans of it, Fridays or Mondays, which is when these holidays fall and then they wouldn't be there anyway. So, that's something to consider for future years.
Yeah. And in some districts, still do every Friday. Every Friday, early out, you still, I mean, some are still doing that as well. I really, I really like our overall, I like the structure of our calendar. It's provided us a lot of success over the years.
And we don't always get two weeks at Christmas, correct?
Very rarely.
Some of these calendars will, I mean, it's been nice the last. Next year will have at Christmas, which I.
Yeah. And this year's senior class and next year's senior class. Memorial Day landed.
They really like the calendar.
Because after these two years, then it changes and.
You don't mean this like a week of school?
Yeah, about four days.
I think it's a good point that you bring up, Molly, that for the last two years, we've had two weeks off at Christmas and it's unusual. So, once we get to that calendar where you don't have the two weeks, people are going to say, well, we always get two weeks off. Just for those who are listening, that it's just, I think that is a calendar, but it's not always, it's, most of the time, it's not the case where we have two weeks off. At Christmas. So, enjoy it.
Enjoy it while it lasts. Alright, so did you want a motion tonight?
Yeah, gi, give us a motion to then we can adjust the date on this calendar and then, um, Debbie can get it online so people can see it. People can start planning accordingly for the last day being June eighth. So, we're figuring what that, I'm sorry, June, uh, June fifth, thank you. Yes, June.
I'm, I move the board approve adjusting twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six calendar to end on Friday, June fifth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Ayers, that the board approve adjusting the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar to end on Friday, June fifth, twenty-twenty-six. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wogle.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Brackman.
Yes. Next, we have the Pleasant Valley Junior High Associate Principal introduction.
So, back on May twelfth, we had the opportunity to conduct five interviews for our junior high assistant or associate principal. Recall earlier, we talked about taking the associate principal would be not a new position. It's just taking our dean of students, which is currently an eleventh-month contract, turning into a twelve-month contract to allow, um, Mike Pekin and the new person to be out there the entire school year, uh, like we do at the high school with our associate principals there. Um, during the week of May twelfth, as I mentioned, we interviewed five candidates. All of them were excellent internal applicants. And I think the hardest part about interviewing five internal people is that all five of them are very, very committed to Pleasant Valley. All five of them are wanting to and willing to do great things in our district. Um, so it's always difficult to select the one who is the, you know, in that interview process that comes out as the best fit for that position. You could take any one of these other four individuals and probably put them in any one of our other schools or in a leadership position as well. But tonight, we are introducing to you Kim Verheke. You have her resume in front of you. Um, Kim can kind of walk you through her history as well, but she came to us as a secondary math teacher at the high school. Um, came to us from Sherrod, if I, no.
Sterling.
Sterling. That was the S school you came from. That's right. Sterling. It's in Illinois. Um, but came to us from Sterling and has recently served, uh, the last few years as our last couple of years now, as our CIA construction assessment lead facilitator position, working in correct, uh, coordination with Ernie in that role. Um, we have already, um, with the consent agenda, you've recommend, approved her recommendation tonight. We have also posted her position that she has been serving, so that just creates this domino effect moving down the road. Hoping to do interviews next week for that position as well. So, if there's anything you'd like to ask Kim, you are more than welcome to tonight. But again, you know, if you just want to tell us a little about yourself and the excitement of this position, we greatly appreciate it.
Sure. So, I taught five years previously in Sterling, Illinois. Uh, so I'm an Illinois convert. I started my career there, um, very, great experience. I loved every minute of it, uh, but my heart was back at home in the Quad Cities. Uh, I heard about a position opening from one of the people I went to college with, really, at PV. Didn't take long, did a little research and said, yep, that's where I want to go. At that point in time, I was commuting an hour each direction. I did that for three years, so I was also ready to be done doing that. Um, so we moved over into the Leclerc area, so I will be like a few miles from the junior high, which will be really nice, um, in twenty-twenty. It was an interesting experience. Um, and then, so I taught five years in Sterling, I taught ten years over at the high school, and I'm in my third year now as CIA lead facilitator. Fabulous title. Um, and at the time, I've kind of worked my way through quite a few TLS positions, so I've been a collaborative lead. Um, I've been a building lead at the high school and then now serving in this role as well. Um, I went into education to like support students, like to see the growth in students. So, a lot of people asked me, like, when I was leaving the classroom, they're like, do you think you're going to miss it? Well, I mean, I'm assuming I'm going to, but like you really don't know until you step out. So, um, that's the part I look greatly forward to, kind of blending that together, is having the ability to support teachers and staff and the adults, but also get back to the roots of impacting students. So, I think this role provides that like happy medium of those two things. So, I'm very excited for that part of it, too.
Any questions?
Tell us a little bit about work you've done with junior high students or junior high itself.
Um, so, the, I have not like actually taught high school or junior high students. Um, but I like to say, because I taught ninth graders, they're just like slightly bigger junior high students. So, if you've ever met a ninth grader, they're just a little grown-up version of them. Um, and I taught them for quite some time, um, at like a remedial level and then, like, um, just an entry level ninth grade. So, I've kind of had a good experience with that age level. Um, in terms of supporting teachers at the junior high, so in realm then supporting students, um, I worked through quite a bit of curriculum across the entire content areas. So, orientation, PE, your core classes, so supporting students through supporting their teachers is what I've done mostly for the last three years.
I noticed that you had gotten MS in educational leadership, and so kind of going into a, a role now in, in a more leadership role that you are. What types of, um, uh, skills do you think that you're preparing either through, between that MS or through your, um, other, uh, roles within the district, um, make you especially a candidate to be a junior high associate principal?
So, I think a lot of the work, um, through like the TLS system gave me the opportunities to like start little and then kind of like work my way through some of the leadership. So, I first started as a collaborative, um, lead, just like being in charge of like my department, right? And I support my teachers and I'm a voice for them and I communicate between administration and my teachers and like bring back voices. Uh, so I started in that realm and then building on that, where I went into a building lead position. Then I had the opportunity to, um, develop and present professional development, which really gave me the opportunity to work on my like instructional leader part of it, um, and then take those two things again. Um, and then take those two things again, combine them together into my current position. Um, lots of learning, lots of engaging in various adult, um, learning styles, like all the personalities. You learn to facilitate, communicate, kind of navigate some of those tricky situations. It gives you a lot of opportunity. Um, those are a lot of the skills that I know that I will take into this position along with, um, my ability to work with students.
Where do you first see the challenges to this role?
Um, I think being in a, like an internal candidate, I will have like that challenge of being somebody's peer. And then growing into more of like a leadership position, that will be a challenge, uh, getting to know people at a deeper level. So right now in my current position, I don't formally see teachers as often as I would like. Um, but that also grants me the opportunity to get to know people a lot more. Uh, but I will need to know a lot of names, student names, and then getting to know, um, the teachers. And sort of the intricacies of the building, there'll be a lot of learning that will need to be had.
So, uh, Mr. Schuster, since she's going to be associate principal, what roles do you think she'll take on that currently other people in the administration are taking on? Especially since, you know, she's kind of going into a new role. Will they be taking some of the load off of Mr. Pekin or off of some of the, uh, dean? Where do you see her role to be?
Yeah, associate principal. Great question. So I'll start with Dr. Hicks in that position. We really saw Dr. Hicks moving kind of into that associate principal position. That is really why we moved from the dean and wanting to put her into that associate principalship. A lot of things that she was doing would have been for, she supported one of the classes with, um, supporting kids, but. Colin Wicken really took a lot of the student role. She did a lot of professional development, um, working with PLCs with teachers. Uh, she was overseeing special education, the five oh four process, remember those other things, and also hiring paraeducators. Uh, all those roles helped support Mr. Pekin as the principal. So I would see a lot of those roles that Kim will take on as well. But I think whenever you hires, whenever you hire somebody in, you always look at what is the strength of the principal? And what are your strengths as your assistant? And then also what's your strength as your dean of students? And between all of them, you might say, here's the roles you will take on. For example, with Kim being a math teacher, there's pros and cons of her being the math PLC. Um, so they'll sit down and they'll talk about those type of options where right now Mr. Pekin oversees the math department. Maybe he'll continue to do that. But it'll really be just helping her learn those and, um, her supporting him at a different level than what Colin Wicken would be doing.
But most, that's, and then the role, dean role of, of, um, Dr. Hicks, will that be then taken over all by Mr. Wicken or will?
No. Kim will still have a lot of the same roles that, uh, Dr. Hicks had as well. The biggest thing we were starting to see was that with the number of students we had and the, and late hirings or hiring paraeducators during the summer. This, having an assoc- associate principal there allows Mike Pekin to get away. And then now in this case, Kim can help do some things over the summer as well.
I know before, like, Dr. Hicks had maybe the sixth, I mean, seventh grade, uh, Mr. Wicken has eighth grade, but, and that's still, there'll be that difference in there?
Yes.
Then you'll take on one of the grade, one of the grades, I guess.
Now, I'll give you an example, like Colin Wicken right now pretty much oversees for seventh and eighth grade, all the attendance. You know, so it's not, they'll still split, you know, one does seventh, one does eighth, but he does seventh, eighth grade attendance in general. And then he also does the, uh, a lot of the activities activity up there.
Well, we wrote the job description, we really tried to mirror the high school, um, associate principal as far as scope and responsibility. Because that's really what this position should be doing, is that similar type of role. So it's a little bit of a hybrid, but we really did try to model what we already had in place that we knew was successful.
Any other questions for Kim? Well, welcome. We're excited for your, I guess, welcome to the junior high. We're excited for you to take on that new role and thanks for joining us this evening.
So Kim will officially begin on July first in that capacity as the associate.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, no motion required because we. So we will move on to Mr. Clangin Smith for Clangin's.
All right, you have the April thirtieth monthly financial reports in the board packet. And looking it over, um, I did not really see anything that stood out to me as unexpected at this point in the fiscal year. Uh, so I would take any questions if anybody does have any questions on them. One thing I did want to point out, just, just for your future reference. Our May monthly financial reports will be presented at the July, the one board meeting in July. Normally, they would be presented at the second board meeting in June, but, uh, I'm not going to be able to be at that board meeting. And so we're just going to present them one board meeting later at the July board meeting. And then remember, June monthly financials and July and August don't get presented until after the auditors have been here and finished the. Work at the end of the fiscal year, so just a little change in the schedule there. If anybody has any questions on the April monthly financials, I'd take them if you have any. Otherwise, we just need a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for April twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Wagley, let the board accept the monthly financial reports for April twenty-twenty-five as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wagley.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Yes. All right, future dates for the board, uh, remember Friday, June sixth is our last day of school. It's a full day. Um, our next board meeting is Monday, June ninth. It's going to be regular start time at six PM. And then June twenty-third at six PM and then July fourteenth at six PM. There's only one board meeting in July. Is there anything else? Put it to the order.